Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, June 20th, 2016 at 7:05 PM. Tonight, we will be reading through several ordinances. And I might give a little bit of background on this. For the first time, council is taking a recess in July. It usually happens in August. So, we have a combination of taking our recess a little bit earlier in the year than usual, because it's approved by council earlier this year. We're taking that recess a little bit earlier. And we also have a fair number of projects and appropriations. So, we have our usual summer loan payments that we have to make for certain debts that the city has. We also have some improvements to streets, some improvements to water lines. And we'll be having a few readings tonight where we will just have the first reading and then the ordinances will continue to be read for the second and third time in August. There will be a few of those. For the most part, though, what we will see tonight are readings and then a move to suspend because there are deadlines that are approaching or projects that need to be completed in a timely fashion. So, our first item of business will be to establish a quorum. We do have a quorum present tonight. This council member, he is not able to be with us, but the rest of the council members are here. And then we'll move on to disposition of minutes for our May 16th meeting. I'll have a motion, please, for approval of these minutes.
Standby.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of May 16th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We'll now move on to communications. Council has received two communications regarding liquor licenses in the past few weeks. The first of which is to the Wolf House LLC. And what this is, is Smiling Skull Saloon has a name change of the owners. And so, there is a notice that needed to be filed with the liquor license division of Liquor Patrol at the Department of Commerce. And so, we get to notify. The second one is a tracks application. And this is with Wilson Enterprises of Athens LLC at 700 East State Street. And that is sole restaurant that is operating there. And they are purchasing a liquor license that is held by Q Club LLC in Hillsborough, Ohio. And that one does have a date by which we would need to notify if we have any concerns or comments. And that filing date for that is July 14th, if we have any concerns about it. All right. And we'll move on to communications from other council members. Do we have any? Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce to the public, in case there are folks who aren't already aware, there'll be a public forum tomorrow evening. That's Tuesday, June 21st, at the Community Center for the Athens Environment and Sustainability Commission to share publicly a draft of the Athens Sustainability Plan, which has been under the works for the past about two years as a result of a successful public meeting that took place likewise at the Community Center. So, that will be from 6:00 to 7:30. And everyone is invited to attend and interact with the draft and provide your feedback as well.
Other council members? Do we have any communications? Yes, councilmember Butler.
Well, I thank you, President. I had a quick question. I wasn't sure if we needed to amend the agenda this evening?
Yes, we do. Thank you so much. And maybe perhaps before we move on with any other communications and before I forget, we will move to amend the agenda. And this is for the purpose of adding two ordinances that will be heard tonight. Ordinance is number 9416 and 9516. I have a motion to amend the agenda. Standby. A second? We have a motion and a second for amending the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the amended agenda has been amended. And thank you, councilmember Butler, for that reminder. That was an important communication. Any other communications from councilmembers? All right, we'll move on to communications from elected officials. Law Director Wise? No. Okay. Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple. One is that MSA Sports, who was the contractor, will be doing the design engineering and construction of the new swimming pool, will be hosting a community input engagement at the pool or it'll be both at the pool but also at the Community Center. I believe the Community Center is also kind of the rain date. If it rains, it'll be inside there. But that's going to be July 12th. The time is yet to be determined, but that'll be coming up mid-July. As part of the contract agreement is that they reach back out to the community and have at least one, if not more, community engagement sessions in rapid succession going forward, looking at exploring indoor or outdoor pool designs. Looking at coming forward.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes.
Can you mention the name of the company again? Because this is the first I've heard.
Yeah. It's called MSA Sports.
Thank you.
And the other announcement that I have, and this will be coming forward likely in August, mid-August, where there will need to be some council action. But the Rotary has gone through pretty much all their due process of wanting to deed Camper Tan to the City of Athens. It's gone through their legal counsel. We've also had council look at the contract or the agreement on our side as well. The Rotary, because of individuals being out of the country, they'll have one last executive vote on this. They've already had one and gone through. And so, it's just a formality they need to do at this point with certain conditions. That being that it remains Camper Tan, the name remains Camper Tan, that the lodge is still there to be used by the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, as well as the storage facility up off of Longview Heights, which is used by the Girl Scouts to store cookies and things of that nature, that that is accessible to them as well. And that it may be maintained as a nature space and with some trails put throughout there. So, this is 14 acres, 14-plus acres of Camper Tan being donated to the city at no cost to the city, other than maintaining it.
I had been asked to update as many citizens in the far east side. We had heard of one concern. We had a fill pool fill where they failed to know how to plant. So, the pressure kind of popped and wound up being some rusty-looking waters or water is safe to drink. And measures are in place to prevent that from occurring again.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Kita. All right, we'll move on now to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 8516 is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance. And this is introduced by councilmember Wise.
Thank you, Madam President. Remember, we suspend the rules for 8516.
Second.
Reason for suspension is we're running close to our deadline for July to get these things done. So, this reason.
And I think this particular appropriation ordinance is for $2,300 in unclaimed funds and $49,000 in federal workers' income refund check. Part of the reason to be careful with that money that's coming in the form of refund is that we're moving forward to a pay-forward system that has been determined by the state of Ohio that we pay ahead now. And so, we're taking care of the refund check that we did receive.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments from councilmembers for administration? Comments from anybody in the audience?
We're voting to suspend.
Oh, yes, to suspend. All those, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Wise?
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to adopt 8516.
Second.
As you eloquently stated, all the reasons that we gave for suspension also apply to why we need to do this. If you like, I can read the various lines of what the funds are calling. As you said, it's $2,300 to unclaimed funds and $49,000 to the general fund that we're administering.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 8516. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. We'll now move to ordinances for first reading. And these first two, 8716 and 8816, will be?
8616.
I'm sorry. 8616 is an ordinance authorizing sidewalk enhancements on West Union Street. Project number 301, introduced by councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to suspend 8616.
Second.
For the reasoning that we need to move forward on advertising and accepting bids during this construction season. It would be hoped to get it done anytime soon.
We have a motion and a second to suspend ordinance 8616. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember.
I move to adopt 8616.
Second.
So, this is our ordinance to make the improvements on West Union. There are some sidewalk enhancements. We went through this at committee. Mayor provided a good visual for us. And I want to, and I just want to say it's $75,000 at this point. And $45,000 comes out of the street fund. And $30,000 comes out of the Athens Enhancement Fund, since we basically are improving or enhancing our street state down there. I just want to ask one question. Does that include the sewer line, the storm sewer?
It does.
Okay. So, that's what we are moving on tonight.
I do have one question, just in regards to that, the $30,000 amount from the Athens Enhancement Funds. Does that nearly zero out that fund at this point?
No, but it's drawing down.
To, don't we have another ordinance on the table that's also drawing down? I just recalled that the amount was somewhere around $30,000, but maybe I misremembered that was in that.
I believe that last I looked, there was $67,000 in there. So, this would draw it down to $37,000. Some of that has been encumbered.
Thank you. Justice, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I just briefly wanted to express support for this ordinance. I think it's a healthy compromise. I believe that this is a nice middle ground between the public and private sector. It will make the area more disability-friendly, widening the space, and yet continue to allow traffic, which was a concern, and parking, which was a concern, from the private sector. Thank you.
Any other comments from councilmembers or administration? Any comments from the audience? All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 8616. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ordinance has been adopted. Now, we'll move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8716 is an ordinance vacating the overview drive, city right-of-way of the University Estates Plan and Unit Development, and is introduced by councilmember Paul. Thank you. This is to, it's to vacate right-of-way. We do have representative from the University Estates of Altamont who would like to talk to it. I will not suspend. Basically, it's to enable Altamont Development to go ahead as planned, vacating the right-of-way. If anybody has questions, Rusty is here to answer them.
I'm Rusty Rithhouse from Ellis Associates in Athens, our Citizens Independent Bank Corp., which is a holding company of Citizens Bank and Success Management University Estates Incorporated. My client owns a number of lots of the University Estates, one of which is on 7A, which is up near the clubhouse. When Dr., his name is Dr. Connor, Christian, put pen to paper and drew all this down, he didn't take it to pop here, here into the camp. One of the proposed cul-de-sacs, it's called overview drive. The problem with proposed overview drive is there's a steep slope right next to it. It could never be developed. What my client is looking to do is vacate overview drive and then split lot 7A into two different lots. One would be about two acres, the other would be about over four acres. They have a fire lined up, two-acre lot, which is Equin Hill Village, which provides residential, residential facility for special needs. We're asking you to vacate the overview drive, all the split lots, we need to sell. You have a search.
So, this is the replacement for the one that we sold on Union? Is that, do I?
You know, I represent the bank and not them, so I can't tell you that. Could you repeat your question?
Councilmember Pappy's comment was to question whether this is a replacement for the existing, the one on Union.
Yes, that's my understanding. There are a couple builds in the city that it is.
Any other questions from councilmember? Any other comments from administration?
Just a comment as a member of the planning commission. I was able to review this earlier. Topographically, not sure that a little cul-de-sac would have ever been built. In addition, the city engineer doesn't, and they are cul-de-sacs sometimes when it comes to maintenance.
So, would they enter this building, whatever they're developing, from Altamont or would they enter it from below?
I think they'd come off Altamont driveway. They'd build a driveway off of Altamont driveway. I don't know. They may require variance to accomplish that, but I'll leave that to them to figure it out.
And so, planning commission has already rescinded to the plans for this. I guess some of the councilmembers were a little unclear, maybe not having followed the planning commission. Will there be, so if we're talking lot splits, how many people will reside? Do we know within that cul-de-sac area?
Well, not to that. That will be a separate firm and application when they would submit. It's more the fact that you have a plan, you're going to develop, and you have plenty of streets and roadways in the head when they're modified.
Okay. Okay, so first step on this. Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments on the first reading of this ordinance? We'll move on to 8816, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, subdivision regulations. Chapter 21.08, requirements for construction of improvements. Section 21.08.02, performance guarantee for installation and maintenance of improvements. This is introduced by councilmember Paul. Thank you. We discussed this at least Monday night. I will not suspend. This is a recommendation from the planning commission to change language about bonding or maintenance bonding, to make our bonding requirements more in line with the communities throughout the state. And reduces our requirements from? Yeah, 100% to 10%. Is that right? Okay. There are cities all over the state that, similar in our size, that vary in the percentage of their bonding from, what, 2% to 13%? So, we're?
From 5% to 20%.
5% to 20%. Ours was way out of line. It was 110%.
110%.
It was by magnitudes.
For a maintenance bond.
For a maintenance bond. So, we more or less know all of it than everybody else.
It makes you wonder how anything got done.
All right, we'll move on to ordinance 8916, an ordinance authorizing replacement of the traffic signal at the intersection of West State Street and Lancaster Streets. Project number 306, declaring an emergency. This is introduced by councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to suspend 8916.
Second.
We discussed the ZE committee as to why we needed to suspend. Again, this is a construction issue, and we'd like to get this up and ready and working by the time school starts again in August.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 8916. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Pappy?
Move to adopt 8916.
Second.
Just for a little recall here, this is for new signals at the corner of West State and Lancaster. This is right adjacent to the middle school. There has been, we have a standing committee that's been meeting for several years that deals with safety issues related to the schools in our area in the schools, Athens School District. And this area has been discussed often on, pretty frequently regarding the, especially car traffic and how to bridge that with the pedestrians coming and going out of the school building. And it's very unsafe at different times of the day. So, we're hoping that this signal, new signal, which is costly, a new signal at this time, we're looking at a $95,000 cost coming out of the street fund. So, that's where it is for safety.
Okay. Mayor?
Just that, I had mentioned before in committee this, that $95,000 includes the design of this traffic signal as well as the construction of it. So, it's not just an expensive pole with lanes on it.
And then, there's some additional hardware for it because it is going to need to have timed turn lanes and different things like that during these different times of the day when people are attempting to drop off their children. It's a little hairy so everybody can get to school.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 8916. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, actually.
Oh, we do have a comment?
Do you have a comment?
Yes, please.
Hi, Eric Lee. So, I think initially, when you guys mentioned that the traffic light was the cost of $50,000, is that correct? Because the original number, and then I got about $75,000. And now, it's $95,000.
Well, when the director looked into the costs of these type of lights, I don't know that he's put one in recently, and the cost ended up growing. Service Safety Director, would you like to add to that?
I would like to make comment to this. I mean, there's, you can't put a price tag of the safety of our children.
I totally agree. I just, I don't know where the disconnect was.
I think one of the things is that Mr. Stone said, because it costs more than $50,000, which is kind of a cutoff point to where the departments have to come to council to okay something, that that's why he was coming forward. Not that it was costing $50,000, but because it broke that council barrier.
Okay, we've been misinterpreted.
Yeah, I think that's what he.
First, I thought it was $75,000.
And I don't ever remember the $50,000. I remember they were talking $75,000 to $95,000.
I think that's the first reading of it, perhaps, $50,000 to $75,000.
So, for future, when things cost more than $50,000?
$50,000.
Yeah, I have to counsel.
And then, I'm also just curious, are you guys declaring an emergency and then this forward because this was a problem that was unaware, that you guys were unaware of? Or is it just short sightedness?
I would say that this is.
That's a supposition. That's not really a question, is it?
Well, no, I've been wondering if this is just a problem that you guys discovered the last minute, or if this is something that you guys knew about but decided that you don't need to report.
We knew enough, far enough ahead of time to bring it before committee through transportation. But using the emergency clause is acceptable according to Ohio Revised Code when it's for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. And what that does is, once the ordinance becomes effective, then you don't have the normal 30-day wait. And I think the purpose of putting the emergency clause in this time particularly, we're getting it through the council and ordinance procedure, which we have to, we are required to do. But the emergency clause gives our Public Works Director a little bit more lead time between now and the start of school in August to be able to put that in. And it will be complicated. From the moment we approve it, our Public Works Department has a lot of paperwork to do on their end with making sure for ordering the equipment, making sure it gets through the auditor's procedure correctly. And then, by the time it finally gets to the street department and they can actually begin to do the work to install it, all that takes a significant amount of time.
I mean, this sounds like a great idea. I didn't need any of that stuff. I just.
No, no. So, typically, you will see, not typically, but you will on occasion see ordinance that's moving through that have that emergency clause on for that very purpose. If there was an emergency water line break and we suddenly needed to do a $50,000 repair, we probably appropriate money.
That makes sense.
But thank you for the comments and the interest.
I didn't need any of that stuff.
Yes, Mayor Patterson?
I just wanted to dovetail on what you were saying, that something like this, I mean, with councilwoman recess, with this length having to be designed and whatnot, and for us to be able to have this up and going before school starts up again, that's paramount with this project. So, in the sake of time, we could have put this through the normal process. It would have carried this reading to go to the third reading into August, and it would have slowed down the build for the construction and whatnot. We'd be into the middle of fall with kids.
I was more curious when you identified this as a problem than could it have been?
I think one thing is there's a confusion with the $50,000 again, is that the Service Safety Director and the Director of Public Works may have had this on the planning and may have identified it. People complain about it, and it's been, it probably had been identified through a Safe Route to School program when we were doing planning for that. But because it got bumped up and it was going to be more than $50,000, that's when it came to council.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 8916. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9016 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a grant agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for the McKinley Extension Project, which is project number 302, and is introduced by councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to suspend 9016.
Second.
Reason for this suspension is, we have been talking about the McKinley Extension for quite a few meetings for several months now. And this is another piece to that project. So, it's not that anybody is unaware of it. It's just another piece to that project from the Ohio Development Services Agency with their recent letter that they sent with their matching money. And so, that is what is required through their agency as well to reimburse the city up to $300,000 for this work.
And it is time-sensitive since it's a grant agreement. All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 9016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Pappy?
Move to adopt 9016.
Second.
Again, mentioning what the president mentioned is, these grant-specific type of programs, oftentimes, they don't give us much time to turn around. They send us the letter, they say you've been granted $300,000, as in this case, and they want the ordinance with legislation back to them pretty quickly. So, oftentimes, we don't even have the full three readings to do these.
Mayor?
This one was 30 days.
Okay.
30 days since the receipt of the letter, which, if I'm not mistaken, was June 10th.
This is part of a larger $1.99 project, so we're putting together the funding pieces for it. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I would just add that this is part of a larger project and a good example of the city leveraging resources to accomplish major projects on our major corridors into and out of the city. So, last summer, we were able to finally realize the Richland Avenue project, and the Simpson Avenue corridor is another important entry point into the city, both for the university and for, you know, anybody who traverses through our city. So, it's an important project.
I would add to that piece that this is an economic development piece. Not very often do we have these opportunities in the City of Athens. When you have a company that's really willing to not relocate, they already own a building here, but restart a, a business, I think it all, it loses everybody to work together. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you both, Mayor Pappy and Member Cochran, for bringing that up. And I should add to that, that this is a major collaboration with Ohio University as well. This becoming their east gateway into the university. We will find out on the twenty-fourth, the board trustees will be approving this, but it's going to move forward. So, this is a great collaboration between the city of Athens and Ohio University.
Councilmember, move to adopt.
Thank you. Quick question. My guess and correct, this might then be a candidate for public guard, so it's something we can look into.
Possibly in the center of the roundabout, sitting out the, if I'm not mistaken, that was the case with the Richland Avenue Roundabout in the center with the stonework that goes up, spirals around. Maybe something similar to that to have, something in the center of the roundabout or maybe something interesting, brickwork right around the sort of, the driving lanes itself.
I'll have to see, because the, the funding package, the way it is, if my notes are right, we have Jobs Ohio, three hundred thousand, Ohio Department of Transportation, and a hundred, ARC at five hundred thousand, although that's three hundred thousand now. So, projects may be state funding and they are over, over maybe, but I'm not sure.
That's, that's correct. The, the, the state and federal funding that's coming in, ARC, Jobs Ohio, ODOT, those are locked into road surface and the infrastructure through there, so there's no hard dollars. I don't even know that it's permissible within those funding agencies to be able to do something like that.
But it's a good question.
Could be something, I think we'd have to come back to council, this is a very hidden funding that, there's also some specific best practices as it relates to roundabouts in terms of vision and being able to outline the site. And we still have to get through wayfinding and whether or not it should be...
Thank you.
Any other comments from councilmembers or administration? Or any comments from the audience? Right. We have a motion and a second to adopt night, ordinance ninety-sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance ninety-one sixteen is an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Thank you. I want to suspend ninety-one sixteen. Reason for this suspension is that, again, it is, I believe it's a grant, it's grant-sensitive for HAPCAP. Mr. Rev came last week to our meeting and discussed this with us. And the match that he wanted, and he was going to the other representatives, the commissioners and whatnot, to ask them for money as well. And this is for his program that works with the disabled around the community to get them to awareness and things like that. So, I believe his date is in July, if I recall, that he has to have the turnaround. So, it makes sense for us to suspend. We have a motion and a second to suspend ordinance ninety-one sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember, move to adopt ninety-one sixteen.
Second.
This is for seventy-five hundred dollars from our Transportation Fund two fourteen. Required as a local match pursuant to the terms and conditions in the twenty-seventeen Mobility Management Grant for ODOT. Motion to adopt ordinance ninety-one sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance ninety-two sixteen is an ordinance authorizing disposal of an air conditioning recharge unit in the Engineering and Public Works Department declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Haisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ninety-two sixteen.
Reason for the suspension?
For the emergency clause.
I have the suspension.
Sorry. Because, I believe because of the emergency and...
And just the timely nature where you can get rid of the equipment traded.
Unless, unless it's not necessary at the moment. My correct understanding is...
We're waiting to purchase, we haven't...
So, it's necessary?
And there's, you mentioned it a minute ago, there's a trade-in value to this and trying to make sure that we can get that traded.
And so, you're ready to purchase. We have a motion and a second to suspend ordinance ninety-two sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember, move to adopt.
Thank you. President Haisley, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance ninety-two sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. As noted by the mayor, this benefit of moving quickly is that this equipment can be traded in and used for the purchase of newer equipment. Thank you.
A motion and a second for approval. Well, do we have any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Comments from the administration? Comments from the audience? We'll move forward with voting on ordinance ninety-two sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ordinance is carrying, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
We'll move on to ordinance ninety-three sixteen, which is an ordinance amending the two thousand sixteen appropriation ordinance and authorizing an engineer fund transfer. This is introduced by Councilmember Reiser.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for ninety-three sixteen.
Second.
The reason is, this ordinance has several parts to it. And these, many of these funds have to be transferred and put into another fund so that they are ready for use in July. And it sounds like necessary because of our non-union compensation ordinance, which we passed, it comes into effect in July, those funds are necessary.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance ninety-three sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reiser?
I move to adopt ninety-three sixteen.
Second.
Again, for the reasons I stated, there's several parts that you can all look at it. I'm not going to read through this, it's too pages long. But essentially, we're moving funds from various lines and different departments to prepare for pay raises for the non-union compensation ordinance, also for retirement payout and inter-fund transfers, various amounts. So, it's necessary that we get this appropriation.
Any other comments or questions from councilmembers or administration? And the main reason of the rise service because of the compensation...
Compensation package takes effect July one, July first. We won't be here in July, and people do like to get paid what's been promised in the night. I think for the sake of morale, we probably should have...
Thank you.
Incorporated in this, in addition, as this council member Reiser was stating, we're starting to transfer for a debt payment, it's due July first, as well as...
Yeah, that's a very odd...
Yeah, it's pretty far down the water there for some of our...
Air water bill.
Have any other comments or questions from the audience? We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance ninety-three sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. We'll now move on to ordinance ninety-four sixteen. This is an ordinance amending ordinance forty-three sixteen, authorizing two thousand sixteen rapid water line replacement. This is project number three zero three. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Haisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules for ordinance ninety-four sixteen. Thank you. Essentially, this is an ordinance which we already passed, but is requiring a little bit more money to proceed. And a little bit meaning a hundred and twenty thousand.
And the reason for the suspension is that we're trying to get this accomplished yet this summer, then the rapid water line replacement?
Correct.
We have a motion and a second for suspending rules for ordinance ninety-four sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Haisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance ninety-four sixteen. Again, this was an ordinance that we passed earlier this year, ordinance forty-three sixteen. It's been determined by our Public Works Engineer, Street Director Andy Stone, that an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars is needed for the water line fix as well as the street paving. My understanding from Director Stone and our clerk is that this will be Grand Park Street only.
It'll be Grand Park as well as Dalton, some work on Dalton and Jacobs as well.
So, it wasn't clear if those additional two streets were included, but they are.
Basically, cross-connection type work, I mean, the water lines.
Thank you.
And it is only, this, the mud, the additional preparation is only from the water fund. We've already passed the paving.
Correct. Thank you.
It's an expensive water.
Is that due to size? Is it due to the connections, amount of connections?
It's the age. And I don't know that size, size may change, I'm not sure, but it's certainly the age. As you guys, everyone knows, our city engineer is pretty thoughtful at any time we're doing some street repaving and knowing that there's infrastructure underneath that needs to be repaved, do it all at the same time so we're not putting down brand-new asphalt just to chew it up and have to sink a water line later. So, this is, this has kind of become the new normal, the City of Athens, and I think it's wise in terms of street repairs as well as infrastructure replacement.
Thank you. Councilmember Cochran?
Thank you. As a member of, resident of the neighborhood, I certainly appreciate projects like this that take place to replace some of our aged infrastructure. And, you know, I just want to remind folks that that's a topic that has been on residents' minds over the past couple of years as we routinely experience water main breaks throughout the city. So, it's good to be able to replace these lines whenever we can. As Service Safety Director explained a little earlier, sometimes, you know, we have these old pipes that result in us getting a little coloration in our water some days when, when there are abnormal activities taking place. So, hopefully, projects like this will help to alleviate those sorts of issues on down the road.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmembers and members of the audience? We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance ninety-four sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ordinance passes and, or is approved. And then we'll go on to ordinance ninety-five sixteen. This is an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to Athens Health Realty, L D L C, seventy Columbus Circle to allow a lot split. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I have been asking for suspension of the rules. Second. Partly because this has already come twice in front of Planning Commission. We did talk about it last week. It does have some granting deadlines for the people who are asking for the lot split. About those grounds?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance ninety-five sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember...
Thank you. I move that we adopt ninety-five sixteen.
Second.
We talked about this last week. It did go in front of Planning Commission on Thursday. Planning Commission did recommend passage of the lot split with the variance for Black Poet Road frontage, though it would have a lot of parking and such. The lot director did look at the language of the contract and the lot split, and everything has been okayed by administration.
It's actually the language of the deed. And then there's a restriction of the deed. Primarily related to maintenance and consumer maintenance operation of the stormwater detention and flood control measures.
And if I recall, the reasoning for the company to ask for this was due to... So that they can, they're dealing with head financing. And so, it makes sense to do the lot split to basically split out the development and not the whole property.
Do we have any other questions or comments from city councilmembers? Any other comments from administration? Does anybody in the audience want all pretty comments? Any questions? We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance ninety-five sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved.
Thank you.
We now have a resolution for a third reading. This is a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by twenty hundreds percent, point two zero percent per annum, beginning January one, two thousand seventeen, on the ballot for the next general election on November eighth, two thousand sixteen, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election. This is introduced by Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Madam President. This is our third reading of this resolution, so I move to adopt.
Second.
We've read it and we've talked about it. This is an issue that we're going to put before the voters. Citizens of Athens can make a decision whether or not they want to pay their taxes or not. It'll be debated during the summer and the fall. I'm sure there'll be a lot of pros and cons come out in the newspapers and probably on television and radio and social media. That's great. That's the way it should go. And in November, the decision will be made. So, I think it helps us to send this on up to the Board of Elections and put it on the ballot.
And this would be increasing our income tax rate from one point six five to one point eight five. So, one point eight five cents for one hundred dollars of income. And that's taxable income, as we also mentioned before, certain types of income are eligible for being taxed. Do we have any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I'll just acknowledge briefly that I support us moving forward with this resolution. I think quite simply, just considering our basic infrastructure needs that Councilmember Cochran was alluding to, these are, things are going to continue to haunt us throughout the city. And this is just a small effort to begin to answer some of these problems along with increasing costs and expenditures and the other things. So, I support moving forward.
I would like to just acknowledge as well, just what Reiser said, I won't repeat what either of you said, but that, again, I think this will be a healthy debate and there will be a lot of information presented to the public. So, that when they go to vote, they will have a good understanding of what this increases, why the city needs this increase.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution nine sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries and the resolution has been approved. We'll now have announcements and other business, the first one being a motion to accept the auditor's May two thousand sixteen financial reports. We have a motion and a second for approval of these financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The financial reports have been accepted. And then I believe, Councilmember Butler, we have a motion regarding accepting Recreation Advisory Commission represented.
Thank you, President Haisley. Yes, indeed, we have in front of us, all councilmembers should have, resumee veda of Mr. Samuel Emerson Crowe. And I'd like to make a motion to accept his interest for the Rec advisory Board.
So, I have a motion and a second for accepting the nomination of Mr. Sam Crowe to the Recreation Advisory Board, should we... Recreation Advisory Board. Should we have some other additional comments or questions from councilmembers?
I just wondered if there was any other openings?
Currently, for the Earth Parks Recreation Advisory Board, no. This is a replacement for a member who has stepped down. But positions come down all the time.
Just briefly acknowledge again, Mr. Crowell, I believe, I grew up here in Athens. Long residents left and came back, has a master's international affairs and a PhD candidate in Southeast Asian industry, and as well as you can see his work experience and commitment to our community. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the nomination of Mr. Sam Crowell to the Recreation Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And congratulations and thanks in advance for all the work that will be required on this commission. It's part of what helps our community move forward with all the service that we have, various volunteers on these boards and commissions. We really appreciate it. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on... Oh, before we move on to that, do we have any other announcements from the city council or administration? If not, we'll move on for opportunities for citizens to speak. Okay. This is three minutes granted to anyone who wishes to make a comment about something that has not been previously talked about this evening. And I believe we do have somebody here who would like to speak with us for a few minutes. So come on up to the podium. State your name for us, and we'll have three minutes.
My name's Scott Wolf. I'm in the state license plumber twenty-seven years here in Athens. Business twenty-one years, seven years present. I'd like for you guys to really look at one of your codes. It's 111006, state license requirements for plumbers. I talked with Rick first, and Rick was, Rick and Paula both dealt with on this. And they have discussed it with your city attorney. They find a different view than what I view. They find that everything is in line. They just need to change their registration application. If you know the current registration application has an asterisk on it for licensed plumbers, licensed HVAC, and licensed electrician. The intent of the code here is to have your contractor that is recognized by the state as through the licensing board doing the work in your town. Instead, you have, anybody can come in, grab a registration, say I'm a plumber, start advertising, and go work. That's how the city views it at this time. It's not what the code sets up. Rick was very attentive to me. Rick helped me very much. I talked to Paula. Paula got back to me faster than you could imagine. And, you know, they was both great. But they didn't have the answer I wanted, so I'm here to talk to you guys. And the answer to me is in this code. If you see the code in their eyes and in your attorney's eyes, could you please at least change the code so it is a little simpler to read for the average day Joe? Because right now, this code is very explicit. It's black and white, and they're doing the opposite. You have one local plumber that I will say is a bad plumber. And I'll say he's a bad plumber because I know he's been investigated by the state at least twice in the last three months. He is the only one that you have right now that is an unlicensed registered contractor that is working under these traits. All of the other traits that I talked to, they wanted to try to fill your room tonight, as you can understand. They are willing to come at the next meeting, see if you have your post home. We're going to come. Oh, but we'd like for you to look at this. If you find that the code is adequate, then you need to really ask yourself, are we protecting our residents? Because that's the intent of this code, is protect the residents. To let unlicensed contractors come in and work is, you guys are not doing the residents a favor by doing that. We haven't had a problem. We just started to have a problem a year ago. Part of why the reluctance of the code office and the attorney to do this is because they let somebody do it, even though the application says they can't. So now they're in a dilemma. They're afraid they're going to get sued by this guy when they tell him, well, if you can't do that because our application says you can't, and our code says you can't. They're worried about me because I'm citing the code, and I'm telling them, this is black and white. This is what it says. Well, and then I get, well, that I'm playing semantics with the code. I don't really know how to play semantics, black and white. I understand some of what they're saying when they go to the Ohio Revised Code. Now, please understand, because I've been a plumber twenty-seven years, the only thing my work involves is code. That's how we achieve, everything is code, through Ohio International Plumbing Code and Ohio Building Code. So when I read code, I've done this twenty-seven years, this is my interpretation. The city, the administration as far as the code office, they don't read it the same as I do. So I'd like for you guys to look at it, and I'd like to make a decision. Have you guys made a decision? In doing what they suggest that you do, are you protecting the citizens, or are you protecting one bad contractor and the code office? That's really all I've got to say. I will be revisiting you guys again because my goal is to spend three years to try and get you guys to get a building department. Whether you do it through the city or you do it through the county, twenty years as a contractor, you can imagine what a building department would do for us. Have a great evening.
I think we're ready to adjourn at some of the motions to do that. Second. We have a motion and a second for adjournment of our meeting tonight at the number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned, and we will likely recess then or adjourn again August 1. And we'll be starting early August 5.